Do we have a journalist? Anybody want to cookie help yourself? Don't be shy. Except for you.
Me?
Yeah.
You said, "Don't be shy."
All set? All right, I call the February 23rd meeting of the Budget Workshop to order at this time for the Acton School Committee and let us stand and have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we're going to pick up where we left off on our last budget meeting, which we didn't really do too much with budgeting actually as per se. So I'm going to just turn it over to Paul.
Did you also get the overall summary?
Yes, sir.
All right, welcome, everybody. We're going to continue. Today, we start going through each of the articles. Does this review quickly? Is Mike female?
No, I was going to hand it. Good, I can.
Oh, she can click to it?
Yeah.
All right, so next slide, please. Just a quick review. Is Kevin there?
Not yet.
We can keep trying.
Seven thirty. Yeah, he said he thought he wouldn't be back much before seven. Two is where he could spike them.
So our norms are be present, chair to maintain the list of people that need to be recognized to speak, assume positive intentions for any person, asking questions so forth. It's all about clarity and transparency here. Chair to determine when we need to table something and move. Because it's slowing us down, we just need to put it aside for the moment. Recorder the minutes. I'll record the minutes along with between Kim and I. We'll make sure we get them all down. Recorder the official revisit list. I'll do that in this binder. Willing to put ideas on the table, please, you guys put them on the table and pause and be reflective. Next one, please. Updates. We've got an update to make. The update, transportation. We have received the two bids as of yesterday. They had to be in by 10 o'clock yesterday morning. Yesterday morning, Kim and Trish, they reviewed them because they weren't here because we had the two people that supplied bids. They're right there. They were present to hear them, so we went through that and we selected a vendor and it's a 2.3% increase in the budget. School Committee, obviously, we haven't exercised anything, so if you want to choose, if you want to review it or ask for input on it, we can do that when we get to the article. That's on tonight's list, that article. Okay, and I'm keeping this in here, so if we want to link back to the state revenue page, we can. There's no change. Although, I will say that, I don't know if you can keep trying to notice, the state is having better than expected revenue increases, income to the state than they expected. They also did essentially a neutral budget for school. In essence, it's a 20 million, it works out to about a $20 million shortfall to schools and many schools south of us, some of them are seeing some substantial, you know, half, a lot of them, at least a half a million dollar decrease from last year. And so there's movement and we probably will hear something this week about updating about 23 million is the number I'm hearing back into the budget. I do not think it would affect Acton in any way, okay? Because we don't get aid. The only reason we got that additional last year is because of that premium due and we're over that number, whatever that magic number is. Next slide. Again, there's our meeting schedule. Next one. And these are the articles and this is your first time you see the whole thing. That's where we're standing. That's actually where the budget is. If you want to jump right down to the bottom, you can see where immediately we're at. As it stands right now, it's going to come in at 1.22 negative from last year.
But that's not taken into account all the negotiation?
That's not taken account negotiations because you can't take that into however, remember, we built in, or you'll see, we built in the part so that there's an even step across as we talked about strategically. So there is, yes, there is built-in increase, but not necessarily an increased lawn. It's an even increase for everybody.
Right.
Even percentage-wise. So this is the order that we're going to review things, if you're okay with that. Primarily, we want to try to get at least to Article 3 tonight because we may get further than that. The reason is because we have Nicole here tonight, special ed, and that actually is the area we've seen, as I mentioned before, that's going to be the area of the biggest increase if you look over there. Okay? 18%. So I think that's the last slide. You might click one more. That just, just for the public, if you click, click on that link, you go to the school's website, you know, under Departments and School Board, you go to Budget. It has the meetings and each night or within 24 to 48 hours, we post. Go up. Keep going. There was the first meeting, there was a presentation, there's the data that we provided. There's the second meeting, there's a presentation, and tomorrow, the next day, will be tonight. It'll be basically what you just saw plus whatever we get through here. Go back to the other slide, please. Go back one. The only thing that will be put on the web is, the web is whatever we get through. This will be on the web, but the articles will only be up to where we've covered. Okay? Wherever that is tonight. Any questions?
Would it be helpful if we start with special ed, so in case she wants to leave?
I think, I, we can, but I suspect, the reason I wanted to start with Trish is pretty straightforward and we could make sure.
No, that's fine. She said it's okay.
We could go through the process of making, make sure our processes work out before we get into real conflict.
All right, now I need lights. Thank you.
So first article is Article, whoops, would you go back one?
Article 12.
Article 12 is just transportation.
No, 12 is nutrition.
Excuse me, nutrition. And for the public, it's like, no, idea here is, what we have is, we have the articles. Mike's going to bring them up here. And you'll see the same thing that the school board is seeing. Can we blow that up a little bit, please? You may not be able to read it too great detail. Okay? Basically, we're going to go, I assume, we'll do like last year, right? We'll go down through each line. And over here in this column, if they say they'd like, we'll have some short discussions. If it's getting lengthy, we'll say if they want to just come back to this at a later point, making a change up or down. And then this is just, it's based for additional notes. We won't be updating this on the screen, okay? Anything in here, but when it gets posted on the web, it'll be updated.
Okay. So what article we started with?
Article 12. That's the third column over. That's J, column J. It's near the end. It's your last, it's actually probably the last one in the packet. Or you just hand them on.
No, it was the last one that they would have gotten last.
We already had it right there.
Now, this was basically Holly came up with this budget. Holly from Sanford, right?
Holly was part of it, yes.
Okay, because like, why would the printing services go up?
The printing services, they did not do menus before and they are now doing menus.
Like with the caloric thing they have to have? The caloric intake? No?
No, no, they just say, they actually now have menus that they have printed up or she does. It gets posted.
Yeah, I saw it somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. They didn't do that before, but they're doing it now.
So Mary, are we going to start at the top or are we just going, do you want to jump?
I'm sorry. I don't know why. That just, I was curious.
So we'll start at the top. Again, on the far left here, we have line numbers. When I refer to a line number, I'm referring to this black one, not this, this is the spreadsheet. This one here. So we can start right on 292, support salary. You can see that went up 2%. Just step only.
All right, I guess, I wish I had the total. I know it went up 3.3% this.
What went up 3.3%?
Article 12. According to that sheet.
And Kim has?
$4,200.
All right, well, let's go down, let's go down the line and then, you're talking about the total of Article 12?
Yep.
All right, well, let's go down through the steps. No.
If you delete it, I can take notes.
Support salary. Just a placeholder in there, step only for that. Next line, substitutes. That's just for people that have to come in when one of our calorific cafeteria people are out. Support benefits, that goes along with the, whatever the.
292.
Yeah, whatever the salaries turn out to be. And group insurance, these are all things that are going to be contractually decided once all.
I'll take a minute here to talk about this because this line will be uniform across a lot of lines. If you look in here, it says covers medical and long-term disability for 12 months with an 8% increase. The 8% increase is healthcare placeholder that we put in. If you were one of our, we talked about the loss, Acton's loss ratio in terms of healthcare and we're anticipating that our rates will drop because our expenses, our claims exceeded our premium last year and we don't know exactly what that's going to be. We won't know that until probably April tax time. Somewhere around there. So this, 8% is applied everywhere in the budget. So when we get to any of these, when we talk about this, this is consistent in all the other places.
All right, so now that you say that, how does that go down 2.79%? That line.
Some of the.
You know what I mean? Like if there's an 8% increase in medical, how come, is that correct then or is there an error?
No, no, there's only, of the two, there's only one that has insurance. And so there's, there is the increase there, but last year either because of, like if they don't have it, they get something else. They get dental or they get, you know, so there was some choice changes that were made between the other ones. So this is just what it.
It is. I mean, that's a correct number. I just want to make sure when I see 8% goes up, but 2.79% down, I just want to make sure that's correct.
Sometimes we're going to see changes because we have people that, you know, they've gone from single and then they got a single and a spouse or now they got a single and a child and, or, you know, or they bump down to single versus two adults, things like that.
Okay, let's see, substitute benefits.
That includes, you can see, workers' comp wasn't actually figured out in a lot of benefits last year, so our workers' comp rate for custodial and for.
Food service.
Cafeteria worker had gone up, yet our workers' comp rate for clerical and professional had gone down.
So you're going to see the same situation in other ones, other articles.
Purchased professional services.
That is to pay for.
To pay Holly. So she bumped herself up $750. That's nice. She did that?
Sanford did that.
Sanford.
Sanford did that.
We pay Sanford. We don't pay Holly directly. We pay Sanford.
And Sanford did that to us. 4.41%.
That would be.
No, I just want to know.
That would be a percentage of what her increase would be in Sanford. I mean, that's how they.
They just increased her salary.
No, I know, we have to, if we contact with her, but I just, you know.
They actually averaged that $750 increase. I've seen that three years in a row. It's just a flat rate that they put on.
The other thing is, when you look at, when you look at $17,000 compared to, I think we were paying like $30,000 some thousand dollars plus benefits when we had our own food service director. Still a big savings.
No, I, yeah, if you go back, yeah.
Okay, repairs and maintenance?
They've had more repairs, especially with the dishwasher and, I think, yeah, the dishwasher. We've had over a few times, so we did, our repairs this year has, was higher than what we budgeted, so this was bumped up to just cover more repairs because we're still getting older.
To be, yeah, to be ready for more.
Yeah, because $500 isn't very much if three things go wrong.
Yeah, no, it's two, two times out with a dishwasher.
Okay, well, there you go.
Any other questions on that one? Software maintenance agreement? That went up a little, $100 less. Printing services, we've got the explanation on that. Travel and conferences.
Are they, can we go back to the printing? Are they going to mail the menus home? Is that what that says?
I hope not.
No, no, there's two things that they do that we have printed. We have menus printed every month, which they stay here. And then for, at the beginning of the year and halfway through the year, they do a mailing to see if any students are eligible for free and reduced.
Oh, okay, that, yep.
So that covers all the.
Cover mailings for people who owe money to them.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, that's one of the things that's really good with Heartland, having the payments, having the accounts set up so that parents can actually pay directly in through EFTs.
Also, we haven't had that problem.
We haven't really.
We just don't have the chasing down that we used to have.
Right.
We don't.
Okay.
Okay.
Food went up.
Gas stayed the same. Food went up. 100%. Non-food supplies. And dues and fees. Any questions on any of those?
So the thing that's missing at the bottom, this is a total, and you said you got 4,200. Is that what?
4,216.
216.
4,000 what?
216.
216 is the increase that's.
We could flip back to that other slide to see.
Okay, so that's the increase, right?
It's not, it's not.
Yeah, okay.
Is there any items you see that you need to revisit?
Anything at all on this one? Not really, huh?
No, when we go back, I might do something, but that's beside the point.
Okay.
Okay, next article was. Transportation, right?
Yeah, Article 9.
Article 9. This is basically one page here, very short.
Yeah, so we already had a 2.27% increase and now you're saying you got the contract 2.3? Or?
No, but she's already adjusted.
We got bids back.
Yep, we got them yesterday.
Did you just give them printed out for today or is this the one they had before?
Didn't have it before.
That's the one I had.
That's today.
That's what it was emailed today. This one was emailed today. Yeah, the one you actually had in the packet was probably.
The question is, you had, you printed it yourself, but you guys don't.
I don't have it.
It's just one line. We'll get you a copy.
We estimated 275 when we were putting the budget together because we didn't have it.
It says Article 5.
And then one of them actually comes out to 264, so it's a 6,000 increase over the previous.
All right, so.
So what happened?
So we probably want some history. Did you hear what she said? We had budgeted $15,000 after originally we started this whole thing. We didn't know where it was going to come in. Bids came in yesterday, reviewed. I went through it today. There's two contracts, there's one with First Student and there's one with Ledgmere, two bids. They're slightly different. They meet, they seem to meet all the bid specs or will. The main difference that I can tell you right off the top of the head between the two, besides the cost difference, and this one reflects one of them. I'll tell you which one we put in, but you may decide to review those yourself if you wish and go somewhere else. But company went, we selected, actually had a choice of two options, option A or option B in terms of the bus. You could have brand-new buses if you wanted. That would be more than this. Or you could have buses that are four years old, which are still quite a bit newer than the current buses we have. They'll all come with the same chain, you know, automatic chains, better communications. They also, the one, we've kind of narrowed, we think Ledgmere is the one. They have the contracts with Wells, Kittery, Sanford, Socrates Valley. They'll be basing their operations right here, essentially Sanford and Wells. Not over in, the other operation is based in Rochester. So whether the differences, the current ones, we have to keep the buses on site and primarily just because of the distance, we're worried. I don't think we necessarily have to keep Ledgmere on site because of the proximity to Sanford and so forth. So that's just some things you'd have to decide. If we go with First Student, it'll be more than that. Not that much more. Basically, it goes, it goes Ledgmere's, option B, which is the 2012 buses. First Student's, current buses, it would be the middle rate. And the highest rate would be option B, C, A.
Yeah, for a student.
And it's the brand-new buses, so it's, so those are your choices. All transport pre-K. Through either child seats or harnesses or something like that. Ledgmere, we may have to pay for a certain, because we don't know how many, we may have to pay for the actual seating type attachment. They'll do a strap. Just for the public's interest, Marshwood has had a pre-K program since the 70s. They've transported their kids since the 70s on their current buses. So I think either one, I think we're okay with transportation pre-K. It's just a matter of which one you want to go with.
All right, so if they don't park here, then that lot that we had, that we were getting some money for, what were you doing with that?
$250 a month. $250 a month, which is.
But what did it do?
How's rental revenue?
It went into revenue. That's what you just said?
We also had a bus.
So we would lose that?
That's correct.
Yeah, but, I mean, we need to look back at our history here. We have not, we have not had happy times with First Student for quite some time. We had the complaints of the kids that were freezing their bodies on those buses. We've had breakdowns, we've had lack of communication when we've tried to get a hold of them for something. They've not been responsive to returning calls to the superintendent or the principal.
Last year was really bad. When I came on, it was like until, what, it's over two months before we got a radio to work.
And this year, we had some kind of a spill, correct?
That's correct. They had a bus leak, diesel fuel.
On the premises out there.
Because it was a small bus.
It hasn't, it hasn't been a real responsible company for us and I'm all for newer buses and better service.
I know, but the thing is, our bus drivers are local. They live in Acton, most of them, I think. So if they're not here, they have to now drive down to Sanford, get the bus and come, you know, which would mean that the bus would be nice and warm for the kids.
Who knows? They may say to the, we don't know what they'll do. They may say they take them home. I don't know where I'm from, they take them home.
Right.
Which they did.
They did say that, yeah.
Which, when I, I did have discussions with Ledgmere, you know, specifically about the lot, that that was an option if they wanted to rent that lot like we currently do. If they, if they want, if they want to know who the current bus drivers are, because if they are local, then.
Because in their contract, they didn't.
One option was to let them drive the buses to their home, so that way it was closer. So they are very open to a lot of flexibility as far as making sure that we have a very short time as far as if we have a crisis situation, we need to have buses here. You know, that's definitely part of the discussion. How is that going to be best handled?
Was $150 necessary if Ledgmere is willing to leave their buses here? You know, I mean, is $150?
$250 a month.
Oh, I thought she said $150.
No, $250.
$250 a month.
Well, I think a lot of that was too, because didn't First Student, they were here, they had a bus barn in Sanford.
They did.
And then when they closed, when they lost the Sanford one, they did not want, they didn't want to house them here, so the option was, well, what if we left them here? And it came out that, okay, yeah, you can leave them here, but we'll pay your rent. You gotta pay rent. So it was.
Right.
Because they didn't have a bus barn in Sanford.
But that's a long drive.
They also had heaters. Did they have plug-ins or something installed too? Yeah.
Yeah, they paid for that.
They paid for that, yeah.
But for a bus driver to drive from Acton, and I believe Ledgmere is down almost across from one of the airport entrances, down the side road there, their new office.
Oh, is it?
I believe so. That's quite a trip for a bus driver to ask to do. I think.
But they might be able to park them at their house.
Well, that's the other option.
If they do.
Well, there's a person in Springvale across the Metro Cass that, that's her cat.
She has a bus parked there all the time, so I know.
So it fits in there, but I know. That would be good if they could, if they could take them home.
I mean, I think they would rather see that because it's less mileage on the bus.
That's right, and it's less wear and tear.
Less wear and tear and all the way around. So like I said, Ledgmere was not, you know, they were conducive to.
Whatever worked.
Yeah, whatever really was.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's good. They wanted.
Sanford is extremely pleased. They actually have propane buses down there. They're going to put, these are going to be clean diesel buses, either the option A or option B. The two four-year-old ones are their current ones.
I know, but now with the fuel way down, is there any, you know, you think that would have went down.
It's not going to stay.
It is staying and so.
Ledgmere did not know what, what current, unless they looked at our budget from last year, which I don't know if they did, you know, because it's available.
I'm just saying, you think it would have went down with the cost of fuel going down. This is all cost of fuel, that's what this is.
But they're newer buses, so I would think that would weigh about the difference.
Do you want more discussion?
I think we need to, I think we need to look at, number one, the age of the buses. Number two, our past association with First Student, who really hasn't served us very well throughout this last contract. And I think.
No, I'm okay with Ledgmere. I just want to know why both companies aren't giving us the break on the fuel. Like, did they quote the fuel per mile? What do they do?
It's per run, right?
For the next three years.
Per run, for the next three years.
Three years, all period, for three years. This is it.
So if it goes up in three years. As of what, today, OPEC had said they were going to slow down production. So was the United States, so what do you think's going to happen?
But the price of gas.
It, by the time it trickles down and you get ready to go on your summer vacation, I guarantee you those gas pumps will go up.
No, Memorial Day, it does go up, just so you know.
Just to let you know, this is not a three-year price for each of the three years. This is just for next year. The following year, it's, both of them go up, and the following year, they both go up. But consistently, Ledgmere is less for each of those times. The only place Ledgmere is, quite a bit less actually, when you look at it over the three years. When you, when you, if you look at the, the only place that Ledgmere is higher is on the wait time. Like when you send kids to a, someplace to a bus, they charge a, well, first year is about the same, but by the end of the third year, they charge a couple of dollars more for the, for the bus driver to sit there and wait at the event until, so. But that's the small part of the total cost. The cost is your runs.
I know, but is there any way?
About 50,700 miles, I think they say, or 57, 50,700 miles.
So they give us the bid and we go, okay, we'll take your bid. Or do we say, hey, do for, you know, $260,000, you got a deal? I mean, would they? I'm just saying, I mean, we can't just take what they give us. Why can't we negotiate it, you know?
You can, you can run the risk of them saying, forget you.
The other option is to put a clause into the contract, the contingency clause, looking at the price of fuel. In other words, if the price goes up so much, okay, then we'll recognize an increase and they might be amenable to doing that. I think the next year, you're going to see some increase, but you're not going to see a big increase. Looking out more than, more than the year, you're going to start to see gradual increase, I think, going up.
Price per pound.
I think it's going to be, you know, we're paying for diesel now half what we were three or four years ago. And we're going to be pretty close to that. We're not going to be more than 60 or 70%.
I know, but that's all I'm saying, you know, is there any way to go back to these people and say, you know, we really like you, but we want to do this and, you know, like, why can't we haggle a little?
Would you have to do that with First Student too?
I personally would recommend it because if you put a clause with that, right now, you're getting a locked-in three-year rate.
Well, locked in.
You could go the other way.
What's next year? Can you tell me? What's the next year and the next year? Do you have it there?
Because the fuel the following year could go crazy and the following year.
No, if it's not that much, you know.
It could go either way.
So it'd be 17, 18. What would it be?
So it's about $9 more a run.
No, so what's the total? Did they tell you?
Give the year one run.
The year run, the year one is. The year run, the year one is two ninety-eight, twenty, per run. Year two, three oh seven, fifteen. And year three, three sixteen, thirty-six, per run.
We have five runs.
Are we gonna have more buses because of the preschool?
No, we said five.
Are they the same?
Yeah. I mean, you already know from what we paid this current year to what we'd pay next year is six thousand dollars, overall, for all five runs.
Well, inasmuch as we only had two bids, we had...
Yeah, the other one declined.
Two bids.
We had three, but the other one...
We had three, so we had two bids.
The other one declined?
We have a bid from a company that a lot of places around are very happy with, and we have a bid from the, our present company, which we have not been happy with. So, it's kind of a...
I just can't believe you can't haggle a little bit, that's all. I know in the business world, I would.
Well, they could say...
Price of anything, yeah. Steel went down, aluminum went down, so I say, oh, no, you're not giving it to me the same price. You're getting, you're getting it less, and then they still sell it to me.
And how much is this going up from last year's, what's the increase from, from...
Two seventy...
Total, right here.
Six thousand?
Six thousand.
I, I don't have my transportation one here, for some reason, it isn't in my book.
It's right behind me.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, so then the next year, it goes up seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven, seventy-five, so seventy-eight hundred for the next contract. So, it, it went up six thousand, now it's going up seventy-eight hundred next time, if we sign onto this.
What was the bid for First Student? What was the, what was the bid for First Student? I don't have that, I don't have that.
It's right there.
No, no.
The twenty-five, huh?
The bid for First Student is not up there.
Oh, the bid. It's more, so we don't want it.
Oh, that's right.
And we don't want First Student. No, I'm just saying, that I can't believe we wouldn't give them a phone call and say...
Okay, is that, is that a discussion you want to have right now as far as the budget?
No, I mean, you want me to call them?
No, no.
There you go.
Are you selecting First Student? Are you selecting Ledgmere?
Ledgmere, yeah, Ledgmere.
Just to give you an idea of what the first year was, First Student, or First Student, for the first year, three sixteen, fifty-eight.
They could also say...
Higher than the third year.
We don't care, they have so many buses and so many runs, what would they care?
Well, their costs are way down.
Right.
Whether they had us or not, Ledgmere.
Okay, so we, are we also on transportation, so we can move on?
Yes.
And, and are we in agreement that we're gonna go with Ledgmere?
However, we, we won't vote on that until our next meeting, right? But...
When do they need to know, did they say?
I told them once you had a decision, that, I mean, this is a regular scheduled meeting.
Yeah, this is a workshop where we don't, at workshops, we don't usually vote, but we are in agreement, and I'm comfortable with having Kim respond that, that we plan to accept their contract at our March, at our March meeting.
But we have a pain in the neck school committee member who wants to know what we do if a...
No, actually, we want to spell out the details. We say, look, we, we tentatively selected you, but there's some things we need to work out, where are the buses gonna be?
Right.
Those types of things.
There are a lot more questions that I'd like to see in writing, you know, the specifics.
From them?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So...
Mike, would you flip back to the next one?
Assuming that you'll have something...
You did a what?
You know, something positive for us for the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next one.
Are we going facilities, maybe this budget?
So, what do you mean, what's, what article is that?
Article ten.
Article ten.
What's that in here?
It's in our old one, I think.
Yes.
Yes.
We had it, statute line number two seventy-two.
Two seventy-two, huh?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Page one oh three.
That, that first line, line two seventy-two in the narrative, it should say tractor with mower.
Oh, mover, oops.
Well, I think mover's okay. Wouldn't that explain?
Well, you could say tractor with grass mover, I guess.
Yeah.
It should say mower.
Okay.
How about just tractor with mower?
That has been fixed.
Do you want to have any discussion on that? That's the first one, do you want any discussion on that, so that people in the audience know?
We, we did discuss that the last meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that people understand, that's, that's a purchasing that's financed it over three years at zero percent. Okay?
Can you put that in there too? Financed for three years at zero percent? It does say?
It says some...
It doesn't say zero.
Financed for three years, okay, but I...
No, because this'll be in the budget books, so...
Right.
Yeah.
This is all meant to have your history.
Okay.
Do you want me to walk through this one this time, say voice, alternate?
Glad.
Okay, support, support salary, you'll see it's increased. That's the director, the three custodians again, it's a step forward. Substitutes, same thing, see, it's similar to the nutrition. Over time, we've increased that. We had a fair, fair number of substitutes, was it, yeah, this year, you had a fair number of substitutes due to health reasons. I'm not sure that, that those would necessarily continue next year, and one had a baby, right? I don't see it right now. In the heart, I'm not sure, or something, yeah, okay?
One of your custodians had a baby?
That's what I, I didn't go there. I didn't go there.
Just had it, by the way, last week.
Yes, little girl.
Awesome, yeah.
The picture was in, sure, okay. Stipends, vehicle stipend, this is for the director. The director uses this, his own vehicle to do the, the plowing and so forth around the school. We've increased that. I think, I think school's been getting a very good deal as far as, in the past, and I think this is still, still a very good deal, although this year, you haven't had a whole lot.
Not this year, no.
Stipends, stipend benefits, that's a type of, support benefits, again, that's similar to what you saw before, notice, Mary, that this one is up. And support group insurance, the same thing, there's your increase, and that's shifting from, to family plans, probably. Substitute benefits, again. We're on line two eighty-one. Is there anything on that page you want to revisit, anybody, before we go on?
Not right now.
Okay, two eighth, line two eighty-one, zero percent. This is professional services, purchase, so forth. You look at it, covers expenses like plumbing, electrical work, and preventive maintenance for inside the building. We pay a service fee for expenses for the fire and the security system with protection one. We had a discussion, just to let you know, we had a discussion today about this, and you, you do know, Long Range Planning does know this, that the fire panel, if it breaks tomorrow, they can't fix it. In other words, they're not gonna service this fire panel, that's my understanding. So, we're having discussions about, is this gonna leave us potentially high and dry or whatever, and so forth, so. I've asked, we started working, Mike, Andy and I, putting together an RFP for replacement, and we hope to have that, have an idea of that by April first, what it would be.
And actually, the, the fire panel and security panel both kind of fall under that...
Bucket, yeah.
Yeah.
Area.
It's gonna be one, one price for updating the security system and the fire panel.
So, the plan was, they would hopefully get, get the RFP out Friday, and then with the deadline in back by April first, or April, I think I said first. No, I didn't, because it's a fool's day, and I know I didn't choose that. Fourth, April fourth. Okay, repairs and maintenance, you'll see that that's stayed steady. And property insurance, note, please note over at the side, the property insurance with MSA is out for bid. They're, they're putting it out for bid. We also looked at a bid last, when was it, Kim, October?
Yep, but with another company.
With another company, and they, they, they seem to be a better rate and so forth, but when you really look down at the details of what's truly covered, it's not, it's not apples to apples. It's not apples to apples. And then I attended a conference, or a meeting, one of the main school board management meetings, and the people from MSA presented the price, I'm like, oh, that's not covered, and, and did the other plan, and I was like, okay, I think this, you should consider staying with MSA. Just my two cents, but self to bid. Travel reimbursement, that's a decline, and you see general supplies, custodial, so forth, we're increasing that, just because costs of that sort of thing goes up. Heating oil, we need to have a discussion on this. I think they need to know, understand the whole nature of heating. Last year, we, we locked in for a two-year contract. It cost us, obviously, okay? It could've gone the other way, we couldn't have been there. Seemed like the right thing to do at the time. Probably cost us, cost us ten thousand dollars, I think I figured it out at one point, if we hadn't locked in, so. The thing that you need to understand or know about is, in prior years, at the end of the year, you get the tank filled up before the next contract starts.
Because they were always more money.
Well, that didn't happen this year, so we've used up all of our contracted oil for the second-year contract. So, we have, excuse me, the first year of the two-year contract. So, we're going into next year right now, probably with a, a tank that's near zero. So, we're talking about a plan of maybe how we can address maybe filling that up before, because the, we can buy, after we've used up the number of gallons that the contract requires, we can buy it wherever we want. Well, it's substantially cheaper right now to buy it somewhere else, so we'd be prudent to fill our tank with the lower oil.
Second year of the contract.
Figure out a way to fill the tank with the lower oil, and then, so, that's the plan, and you'll hear some more of that in the future.
We've actually run into that in the past too, and actually, the same vendor will, will service us. They'll bill us at that particular contracted rate, then after the gallons they use, like Bob said, it'll drop to the market value.
And this time it's...
Because it's gone the other way before too, where we've walked in and say like two fifty, we've used our gallons, but then unfortunately, like the market price was like three twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah, we've done that.
We go from two fifty to three twenty-five, so it'll, it'll work out that we actually will be paying...
The key is fill the tank before the year starts, before the end of this budget cycle, so. You'll hear more of that probably in the March meeting, maybe, okay? Electricity, just built a slight increase. Equipment, Mike, you want to talk about that one, please?
The equipment, the, actually, the narrative on that one will need to be changed too, because the, the re-discharge mower is actually contained in line two seventy-two. So, that's why it's, originally, the request was mower, but it's, that twenty-three hundred dollars represents a request for a snow blower, push snow blower, walk behind snow blower, and it's primarily for the pre-K playground area.
It'll be used up as well. Some years, it's my understanding, you've had to hire a crew to shovel the roof off. Particular snow blower, it's a track snow blower, not a wheel one, so the track ones will ride, so the front edge doesn't, can leave two inches of snow, so it could be used instead of a lot of...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Who's gonna put it up on the roof?
I was gonna, I was thinking of...
Get it up there first.
So, so you don't have a snow blower right now, just let you know.
I know, I can't believe that.
We do have one, but it is very, very old.
Well, I was gonna say, we haven't purchased one in a lot of years, that's for sure.
Does it work? Have you ever used it?
You want to tell them which one you've kind of looked at, so that people may, may are...
I've looked at Hondas, Aireans, and Toro.
Toro, yeah.
And kind of leaning towards Airean, Aireans or Honda.
Okay, you, anything you would like to revisit on this article? Anybody? I'm gonna put an eye on the oil, just so that we know we come back and have that discussion, okay? The next article, I believe, is special ed. Correct? Isn't that the one we had on the list, Mike? And, well, let's just stand this out for me, let's write down this number. This is article three, so go to article three on the last page, which, near the front, she's just handed it to you, and you want to write down that number, one six two zero one zero, or eighteen point three three. Okay, I got the number now. We didn't do that for the facilities, maybe we should do that for facilities too. Article ten, Mike, would you go back? Article ten.
They all have a summary sheet.
They all have the summary sheet.
Yeah, we have the summary sheet.
If you want to write it on there, operation and maintenance, oh, we already did that one, didn't we?
Yeah.
It's, yeah, twenty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-six, or up six point four nine percent.
So, we're on article three. Nicole was present tonight, if you have any particular questions. You want to read this time, or do you want me to?
First I need to find it. Does it start with one oh nine?
Article three.
Yes, it does, one oh nine.
Okay, one oh nine, student transportation, and this is for, out of, out of, what is this one?
Out of district, for elementary level students.
Yeah, so this is an increase of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Actually, before we get going, why don't you just talk about what we, overall, what we anticipate the major needs, just to give them context. That way, here's the reason I want to do this. In certain areas here, you could actually get down and you might be able to figure out a particular kid's name, by, by her saying just something in general, then upfront, protecting some kid's name, potential.
Whatever.
Well, so basically, we are going to have, I wrote it down, so, an increase of about fifteen students that have specialized needs, and a decrease of one. So, when you see some of the numbers go up, it's because the needs have gone up in certain areas, such as speech, OT, PT, psych evaluations. We had kind of a different population of students that had needs that we weren't able to meet at different grade levels than last year's budget, so those things kind of came as a surprise to us. So, with information that I have about things that could potentially happen next year, Kim, Bob and I work together to plan to be safe in case some of those things come to to a head next year.
And some are pretty expensive.
But we do have a bucket, too, correct?
Yeah.
It's tuition for, it's, it's special ed and any potential homeschools going to Sanford, coming into Sanford as well, too. It's not just for special ed.
You don't have a special ed bucket?
No, it's combined. For any type of tuition-related thing.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. Tuition bucket.
Okay.
Yep. Go ahead.
First line, 109, student transportation, K, 32,500 last year, 35,000 this year, 2,500 percent, $2,500 increase. By the way, that bid, the transportation bid, is good for how many, much longer?
One more year.
One more year. Okay?
And that is who?
That's.
Fertile farms, is it?
So, that was the contracted amount, 35,000 for this year?
No, no, no. It's a per mile.
It's per run, per mile.
It's per mile, so much per hour, and that's mileage. It's just that we have a few more places to go.
Right. That's what Nicole was talking about.
For next year, you're talking about.
Fertile farms.
Yeah.
And we put something in for 912 also, the transportation. You see, it's a flattery. Teacher salaries.
Can I just say something about that one?
Yeah.
Anytime.
It's, it's been split, we had to split it this year. This is part of the process to make sure, we, we have to reflect whether we are working with high school students, or whether we're working with elementary students. And in the past, it was combined, and we, all of a sudden, we weren't meeting, you know, certain criterias, because it looked like we were just taking care of the little kids, and we weren't doing anything with the high school kids, when we technically were. And so, what you're seeing is, the difference is, if it has a dash 300 at the end of the code, then you know it's high school. If it's a 010, it's elementary.
So, if you, if you were to take this budget sheet compared to the last budget sheet, you'll see that difference.
You wouldn't see any 300s.
Okay.
Okay. So, I just, you know, just want to clarify, I think last year, you actually had a bigger number, but it was only one line, and now it's split.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Teacher salaries, you see, there's, and these are split by, let's see, K, K, what, K3, they're gonna be different, K.
K3, 48.
Right. So, you're gonna see a salary line for, for some areas, it's K3, and then later on, you're gonna see salaries again, it'll be for the other, both on support and for the actual case manager. Okay? So, you see that the first one, there's a decrease there, step only, again, same thing with that tax for that, for that area.
And, and when it comes to ed techs, too, we, we had a lot of shifting this year, where we put some in the regular, we would put some in grants. So, you might see some changes, you know, looking like we didn't budget for it last year, when we really did, but we had to move them, and, you know, move them into a grant to, one, to use up the grant, and, two, to make it so, like, we have a couple of ed techs, one-on-ones, that are on the high school level, and again, to differentiate that high school versus elementary, and so.
We didn't have a high school ed tech last year. And that's a good point, she brought up the grants. One of the things that Kim is making sure is that we, we zero out the grants every year, because it's one of those, if you don't zero it out, you lose it the fall, you know. So, that's why it's constantly moving things based on whatever the needs are, so you zero out the grants. Okay? All right. Ed techs, 912, you'll see, that's, that's an example of what we were just talking about. Substitutes, resource room, again, that's for the, I believe we're on the K3, isn't that to 20?
Yes.
20, 2200, or?
Whenever it says RR or resource.
Resource.
That means K3.
Teachers' benefits, ed tech benefits, again, those written down. Now, we're on the, we're on the, we're on line 117, ed tech benefits at the high school, obviously, changed, too. Teachers' group insurance, again, that's the 8% thing, that you see, it says 22.85% increase, it's $237. Okay, ed tech, you'll see that the increase in healthcare on ed tech is 15%, you're gonna set 8% built in. Okay? Is there anything in particular on there you want to come back to?
Well, what'd you say, when will we get the actual number for the medical insurance? Not till, like, April or something?
It's a real roll of the dice. One thing you should know, though, is we do, remember, we have one of those designated funds, insurance should fluctuate, meaning, let's say, somebody leaves and hires somebody, and they're in a much higher, they have fam, they're, they choose family plan, and that's, everyone's took like $20,000, but we don't budget it, say, for somebody, we have that to offset that. Well, that also could be used to make up the difference. Do you want to talk about what the total is? We talked about the total, with an 8% increase across the line of insurance for all employees.
It's just over $20,000.
Okay. Did you get that?
What'd you say, 20,000?
Yeah, hold on a second.
For all employees?
I would give you, yep.
If you do 8,000.
Hold on, I'll just give you exactly. With all of them. I'm not a math person, I'm sorry.
So, you're saying, so we budget this, it's 8,000, I mean, 8%, and then we find out it's 12%?
Right, but what I want you to do is get an idea, 8% comes to around $20,000. So, if even it went to 12%, okay, that's another $10,000.
Right.
We, we have the ability to do that.
Right.
Okay?
So, for everybody in the building?
Everyone.
Everybody.
Yes.
Administrators, teachers, support staff, an 8% increase totals $43,556.47.
43,000, what? All right, 47 cents, that's what I need to turn.
So, it'd be 20,000, which we, we'd still have the, just to let you know, we'd still have the ability to do that.
Let me see, where is that? In my.
First page.
Funds.
Or last page. First page, last page.
What?
Health reserve is 15,000.
Where is this?
It's on this sheet.
Yeah.
Third one down, fourth one, fourth, bold one down.
Oh, here it is, okay. I just, I don't know, couldn't see that. Gotcha. So, we only have 15,000 now, my goodness.
I still think you're gonna be okay, because I think, I think 8% is quite likely. They'll, they'll probably do in 3% bands, anyway, that's what they've done historically, like 5%, 8%, 11, 12%.
No, I remember they jumped one time.
No, well, the last three years, that's what I've seen.
Oh, yeah, the last three years, because I think they, the unions came in and helped or something.
We were zero the last two, I believe.
Something like that.
Okay? Are we on line 120?
Yep.
Ed tech group insurance, again, that's at the high school, substitutes, benefits. Main state retirement, both for teachers and for the ed techs. Travels and conferences, we increased that quite a bit, they do need to get out much at all. Supplies for the resource room. Testing for the resource room. Anything so far with those numbers? Books and periodicals are on line 127. Okay, now we shift into the four and up. Salaries, and step only, again, both for ed techs and for the teachers. Substitutes. And the teacher benefit, ed tech benefits are tied to the salary. Anything on that page?
Pretty basic.
Pardon?
Pretty basic.
I think you're gonna find a lot of it this year, it's just gonna be like this. Okay, teachers' group insurance, that's the 8% thing, again, for the four and up, same thing with ed techs. And then the benefits associated with those and state retirement.
What's 143, are we on that yet?
138. I'm on travels and conferences, again, same reason as the other one. Supplies, we decrease. Testing, we've increased again. Periodicals, we increase. Equipment, increased.
Decreased.
No, equipment.
Equipment.
Increase, 40%.
Where are you at then?
Line 142.
Yeah. Oh, okay, sorry, I was on the other one.
Director's salary, could, we, we have a contract out with Massa VISA, at least, it looks good for another year. I've already confirmed that with them.
This looks. Yeah, but that looks weird.
This says summer salary.
In the note, narrative.
143 in the narrative, it says summer salary, but, what, what's this?
That, that's nothing, it's, um.
Well, it's something.
It, it was from the previous, when Joy did summer, she, she got that 6286 during the summer, but that didn't happen.
So, it should've said, in the column E, it should've said 6,286?
No.
We only spent $86, but what, originally, you had 62.
Right, usually, the only reason why that line is showing up is because of the 86 on the left.
Yeah.
Because I, there was like one little bit of, yeah. If it, if it was both with zeros, you wouldn't even see it, anyway. I didn't want to take those accounts away, just in case.
Don't take accounts away. Don't do it.
So.
I think we also, we put like a dollar in some places, too.
We did, just, just so that we could, you know, see that line.
Yeah.
But there is, there is no funds for a director's salary, either for the summer or because we've contracted year-round with SAT 57, so.
Okay?
Yeah.
Line 148, uh, excuse me, 149, that's where you need these things. Purchase services.
148, you skipped 148.
Excuse me, 148. Restored and Justicated Safety Care.
These are specific trainings.
Oh, these are trainings that are gonna be included.
Yep.
Okay.
I was waiting for you, Bob, to try and tell them what risks they're for.
Which guy would it be? Do you want to tell them?
It's a laundry detergent.
It's a laundry detergent, isn't it?
Ah, there you go.
It's the thing you beat eggs with.
That's what I was thinking, more of that.
Okay, and the purchase, legal services, you see that some of that's on the jump there, but you'll also see some purchase legal services when we get to the system administration. In fact, the person you met with just beforehand would, would come out, the fee that they recharge comes out of that, not on the special ed side.
Professional services?
Yeah. Is there anything, any of your visits on this list, on this page, you circled some?
That's familiar to say, oh my goodness. You know, when you see the tuition for the public and the tuition for out of district.
Okay, line 150, you want to circle that one?
Where are we now?
Line 150, top of the page. Oh, not your page.
No, I'm not so worried.
Okay.
She said there was more speech.
No, this is tuition.
This is tuition for the high school.
No, this is here.
All right, I'm already past that.
So, is this, would this be the special ed students that are going to Sanford High School?
Which one?
151.
150?
You mean 15,000?
Oh, I'm talking about 176,000.
No.
Line 150.
Line 150.
Line 150 is out-of-district tuition for elementary students.
Correct.
Elementary.
When did we start this, just this year?
No.
No? Always had, always had to do it.
This is a big one. This is the one that, that can, can really sink your budget, anywhere, kid move in tomorrow and, luckily, there's the one half a year left.
I don't remember not being able to take care of all the kids.
Huh?
Whatever. I just don't remember not being able to take care of all acting kids here, in-house, acting elementary, K to 8. I, I don't remember a time when we had to.
Yeah, you do.
We send them off, every year, they go, some kids go places.
We've always had out-of-district placement for special ed kids.
Would you name the organizations that we tend to send kids to out of district?
Sure.
Morrison Center, Sweetser, Spurway, Maplestone, The Bridge Program.
Do any of those ring a bell?
Well, Maplestone, but that's, that's when you get to line 152, right?
Zero, what's W O C D, go, that's Wells, something, somebody go to Wells?
And not current, no current special ed students are there.
That's the other way. That's Wells bringing their child, a child to Maplestone.
Oh, I see, oh, okay, because I see it go by the house, well, I see them all go by the house, so, yeah, they go everywhere.
Community district, that's what he's, she's seeing the bus come towards Maplestone.
Sounds like a radio station.
The scary part is, this isn't that many students.
No.
We're not talking that many. We can talk of less than 10, I'll just leave it at that.
And this is, this is also, this is not an option.
Nope.
Yeah, it's required.
You know.
Okay? Do you want to ask any? I think we're on 153, is that correct?
Sure, we could be.
So, secondary would be like Maplestone, is that secondary?
Sweetser.
Sweetser.
Sweetser could be. They all, they all take K12.
They all can go either way.
Okay.
So, it's just a matter of which program's the most appropriate for what that student needs.
Yep.
I have to say, she's done a good job of, this could've really blown our budget this year.
Yes.
This could've really, this area.
There's been a lot of work done this year.
There was, this, 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 this particular budget year that we're in right now.
Yeah.
We've been, we've had some.
Very fortunate.
High ones come in, and then luckily, some high ones went out almost at the same time, essentially. So, kind of, we were, if they'd stayed, we'd be.
You mean moved out of town?
Yes. And we know of one potentially moving, we don't know for sure, but, so. All right, travels and conferences, line 153. Zero, supplies, slight decrease, dues and fees, zero, zero increase. Multi-state billing, do you guys know what that is? Main state billing, multi-state billing?
Yeah, they got it built for the Medicare.
Main care and stuff, yeah.
Yep.
Is it Medicare or main care?
Main, main care.
They do, it's both care building.
Main, main care.
It, she's asking because of the comment, says Medicare.
Well, it's.
No, it's Medicare billing, it's.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Contractors psychological services, Nicole's got some ideas, and possibly somebody in another year that might, might be the same money, probably be less, I would guess, but we have to put the placeholder in. Speech supplies, occupational therapy, we know we're gonna have more students there.
Eight more students to be.
Did you hear that?
Eight more for OT?
Speech.
Oh, speech.
And primarily for what grade level, so the people have an idea. Okay? Remember, we added pre-K, a lot of those services were identified in child development services, and they covered some of those, like the testing and all that. We, we don't have to pay for that. That was one of the advantages to having them come in. Unfortunately, we have a big number of pre-K kids coming. And that's not unfortunate, that's actually good.
Then there's one in kindergarten.
If, right now, what's, what's the school population?
Right, and then we cover the class.
Wait, the pre-K population?
Yeah.
Pre-K is 29 right now.
Right, but if we didn't have, like, over 10% of the school population's in pre-K.
Somewhere.
Right, you would, right now, you would have 170 kids in this school if you didn't have pre-K.
Well, the night, the nice thing about having the pre-K and having them tested ahead of time is that at least you know what you need to budget for.
Exactly.
Whereas, if they were just coming in next year as kindergarten kids, we would be paying for the testing, and then we would be paying for the services.
That you hadn't budgeted.
That we hadn't budgeted for, so that's, you know, that's, that's a real plus.
It was always a guess, yeah.
To have some of that identified before they actually come under our umbrella of services, that's.
They may also need the services for less time, the sooner we get to help the kids do.
Right, for next year.
The best part is they learn quicker.
Right. They just become more successful, the sooner we can give them the intervention they need. So, it's, it's really what's best for kids.
I think that takes us really down to 163, which is summer school transportation. There still needs to be a discussion on, with you, and are you gonna offer summer school in the same way you have in the past?
Well, some, this transportation in particular.
Oh, this is for the kids that have year-round.
Yeah.
Excuse me, this is for the year-round.
Yeah, we have to do this, right?
Yeah, this is not extended schooling.
So, this is like, this is an extension of line 150, really?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because most students that attend an out-of-district placement would require Yeah, because most students that attend an out of district placement would require extended school year services. And the current placements provide that on an abbreviated schedule, so it's, they're there less time, so tuition will be cheaper. But we still have to get them there.
Still have good services.
So your bottom line was 16210, if you want to write that on the bottom of that page. 18133.
They're here.
Yeah.
Right, if you want it on the sheet, let me see.
16210.
Now, I'd like just to take a moment, Nicole, if you'd say one other thing regarding how you allocated ed techs this year. Part of the plan, I, last year I told you that we have to put ed techs where they need to be to benefit kids. We started that process. How much movement have we had with ed techs this year?
I would estimate at this point, we have decreased by at least 10 hours per week of ed tech support that students need. However, it's a long process because if the IEP calls for it, you have to collect evidence that it's not a service that's needed and it can take up to a year to decrease that. So we've done a lot of decreasing because our staff is so wonderful and they're great at meeting the kids' needs on their own. We still have tons of kids that need that extra support, so we're just kind of really trying to define what support they need and how we can best do that in a way that is the most efficient and effective.
So, and so just to let you know, there has been staff that moved around this year, has needed, which is more so than I think in prior years, from what I understand. The other thing is Nicole is going through, you have to go, you have to do an IEP every year. What percentage do you figure you're through right now, total, all the IEPs? So basically, so maybe another 30% to do, so we don't know if those are gonna have other impacts on the ed tech. But we do know this. Our pre-K next year is gonna need, I mean, our K next year is gonna need support. So even if we were able to reduce numbers, we know we're gonna need it over there.
All right, so we have six special ed techs now?
Seven.
Seven. Where's the other one? On line 112, it says six.
Right below it.
There's a high school one too.
Are you counting the high school one?
No. If I count the high school, we have nine.
But I guess maybe because it says moved one ed tech in the current year to better utilize the local grants.
Right. Remember, she said things are gonna be in a couple places?
Yeah, so.
Where's the other one?
So if an ed tech was paid out of a grant, it wouldn't show up on here because.
I've moved them back for this budget coming up.
Yeah, so this would be for seven then, no?
No, no, no.
No?
No, the numbers were for, I had them in there for a while and then I moved them. So also I was trying to say was, if, sometimes I've had to move them and it looked like there was a loss or an increase, yes, because I moved it back.
Okay, so then line 129 is also ed tech salaries.
Line 113 is, there's, there's one, there's ed tech for the resource room and there's ed tech for the self-contained room. And then we have high school ed techs.
All right, so not counting the high school, how many ed techs do we have? Eight?
You're talking about special ed?
We have seven special ed ed techs.
All right, so then.
Six, eight. Actually, we have eight.
Is that, she's special ed ed tech?
Oh, well, and we have one that's retiring, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We got.
All right, but here is, yeah, so we have eight here, but one might be from the grant being moved back, being paid.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Yes.
But you kind of have to put them in the budget because you're not sure about the grants till you get the grants, correct?
Right, right. I mean, when we, when we get the grants and we know that, again, we might have, like I said, we've had some at the high school level. We've had to go get another ed tech to cover the high school level and, or, you know, we might find that we need more here because of certain students that come in and then they need them and we end up hiring another one. So right now, we definitely have eight plus one at the high school, so we have nine. We do have one that is retiring. However, we would probably have to replace that one, so I want to still continue to have eight in your budget because.
But if someone's retiring, did you put a lesser amount in the salary, say? Because sometimes a new one might be cheaper. So what'd you do though? You kept it at her? Or him? I don't know. I seriously don't know.
But we don't have any mail it.
We don't have any mail it.
But you shouldn't say that.
We know that some mail subs, but we don't have any mail it.
Not yet.
One at the high school.
Yeah, one at the high school.
Actually, no mail at the high school.
And it's, and we're looking, we're trying now when we hire ed techs to hire ed tech threes.
Which means we're going to hire at a higher level than, you know, we, we still have two that are ed tech twos. One that's moving up to an ed tech three this coming year.
Next year, yeah.
And.
Completing that degree.
Yes, to plead, and then. So like I said, even with the one retiring, we would definitely want to replace with an ed tech three, not, you know, an ed tech one. I mean, we try to just do ed tech ones at the high school.
I know you figured this all out, but I have to say things when it pops into my head. Thank you.
It's okay. It's all right.
I don't mean you didn't put it in there.
One thing you should know is, there's some places you could get by with an ed tech two, but you have less flexibility.
Well, a lot of one-on-ones, I wouldn't want a tech three, I mean.
No, one-on-one, that's usually because like they physically incapacitate or something, or controlling, but having a tech threes allows you to leave them unsupervised, so to speak, and allows you to do more things.
Oh, the ed tech three, yeah.
So most school systems are doing the same thing. They're trying to hire a tech threes. Now, if the person that's an ed tech two that's completing their, completing education that would make them qualified for ed tech three, we would technically have to make them an ed tech three. We could keep them in a tech two, pay-wise. But it doesn't make sense because then we have less ability to use them in multiple places this way. So it's worth putting them as an ed tech three because it gives us the flexibility to move them whenever we need to. Okay? It's a few more dollars, but it gives you more.
A lot more flexibility.
Flexibility. And like, for instance, this, when we hired the central office person, remember? He said, one of the things, we want to make sure that whoever we hire has, has a degree, that we can get them as an ed tech three so that if we get stuck, we can have them fill in for substitutes. That's happened a few times.
Been very busy, very busy.
And, you know, that just was planned ahead and it's worked out really well. And partly because you can't get subs.
Well, and sometimes it's also just a fill-in for an hour, you know, because it's, a teacher's going to a meeting or an IEP and you don't want to, I mean, having that flexibility of having Eileen be able to say, okay, you know, I'm just gonna cover for this class while she's in the meeting versus hiring somebody for half a day, you know? And a lot of subs don't want to come for half a day.
Yeah.
It does give that flexibility for us.
You should be able to do that too with, with other ed techs that are ed tech threes that are in the building.
But they generally are allocated to.
If they're not special education or allocated in a certain area, if they're.
Our ultimate goal is that every ed tech is allocated for every minute of the day.
For a special ed?
Yeah.
Yes, I understand. I wasn't thinking of special ed.
But even, even for some, let's say they're assigned to a special ed student whose family's gone on vacation, so they're gonna miss three days. Those ed techs say to me, I've got some availability, where do you need me? And they, they will move and go where needed.
I guess I was thinking more of general education, things that, ed techs, how many ed techs do we have?
One, right.
One?
One at, one in, one at the other end.
We have two.
Yeah.
Just one.
No, we have two.
We have one that is able to float amongst classrooms. All the other general ed ed techs are specifically assigned, like pre-K. Those are general ed. Gail.
Yeah.
Jen. Those are still considered general ed.
So we only have one at the upper grades that's.
We have one at the upper grade that can float between classrooms right now.
Okay. And is she ever used as a substitute to fill in?
Her schedule is jam-packed as well.
Again, pulling them from their regular schedule would be only as a last resort. It's never my first go-to.
Eileen is actually, that was part of her job description, was to be the floater, you know, for the internal sub when we need one, especially in a pinch.
Yeah.
They're all willing to step up.
Do it, yeah, but it's just. Use the one that's the most flexible.
Yeah.
So I'm saying, if that position is wherever they're vacated, you want to do the same thing.
Do we want to check with Kevin if he could join us? It's almost 7:30.
I've been trying to call him, he's not.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so is there any revisits on that, that yourself, special ed?
Not right now.
It doesn't look like there is that much legal room.
No, special ed is.
Next week, okay.
There won't be much legal room anywhere. Okay, Article 7. System Administration. Line 233. Line 233.
233.
Yes, and all that?
Got it.
You read or me read?
You go.
Line 233. Board stipends, you see it's the same. By the way, people, they have to do some, we have to do that. Some people don't. Don't have to, but you have to. 236, purchase professional services. This would be legal or other professional related, like our.
Auditor.
Auditor. No, this year we budgeted 25,000. We haven't used any, we just needed that. Granted, we're using some of it in the, what you're gonna be using right now, you just met with somebody on something.
But negotiations too.
And negotiations, and we've had, I think, two legal calls, short, small, short little things. We've only expended, I think, 16, 1700.
Yeah, 2200.
2200. 16 was the last bill. And so we've decreased that. Now, you also still have, just to let you know, you still have over here when you're designated. You have to cover that. So, so the history is saying we don't necessarily need that, so decrease this. You'll see the same thing when we get the tuition.
Yeah, but we got a lot of hours coming up to use that 25 that was budgeted this year.
Yeah, but I don't think you'll get.
It won't.
Lot of hours.
We don't have that many hours.
No, we will have with negotiations, because we do both support and teacher.
I don't think it will come anywhere near 25, but.
Lawyers cost all mine.
But you, do you agree the process seems to be.
Process is wonderful.
Repairs, maintenance, it's equipment and computer. Liability insurance, flat, it's up to bid again. That's that same thing.
It's the same package.
Postage, flat, averaging, decrease, increase, excuse me, 200. You had five openings this past year. We, remember, we increased, we bought a service with, school spring?
School spring.
And. Travels and conferences, flat, supplies, slight increase, dues and fees, flat. We're on 244, unless you had some, anything there you'd like to question everybody or revisit on the prior page?
Hold on. Do we really use that much postage? Isn't everything emailed?
You remember, it's for the whole school. So sometimes I have teachers lined up with all the little kids, so they write everything to the pen pal, so.
The only one that isn't is the nutrition hesitante.
Yeah.
Print, mail, you know, that's the same.
So, and we still, even though we added school spring, we still do serving schools, correct?
Yeah.
It's funny, if you, if you wanted to those, they won't be posted in both places. Jobs are not, the same job is not posted in both places. Sometimes it is, quite often it isn't. It will only be posted in one or the other. It's kind of odd. 244, banks, charges.
We do double deposit slips and things like that, so that way we always have records, accountability.
Stipends. I don't even know what that one is. Board secretary stipend.
What is that?
Yeah, I don't really understand.
Board stipends?
Yeah.
That's you guys.
Oh, it's the benefits. We have to pay the benefits on that.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
You see, that's why I say, let's get rid of them.
We tried and they wouldn't do it.
Right. I've heard that in other districts.
But that stipend benefit is for the, not you guys.
No, for Jennifer.
Because we pay whatever that stipend is, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, for Jennifer.
Which is the next line.
The board stipend.
The next one is you.
You have to do payroll salaries for that one, for her.
The next one is you.
Oh, that, oh, yeah.
I've inverted, I flipped the two, because they're almost the same number.
That's the next one, okay.
So first, line 233 was for the person that does the minutes and so forth and then down here.
Yes, yes.
Okay, superintendent salary is the same. Obviously, you, when you get to your sheet with all the combinations, this could change. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Superintendent principal.
The proposal is to combine superintendent, principal composition. So this budget is, was, this was built up before that had been finalized. So when we get to that, they have a sheet where the different proposals, what the cost would be as it is, what the cost would be with their change, with a decrease, actually. Okay? So the, Mike, would you go to the summary page for a minute? The blue, the blue one? So this is this, what we have here. It's not the combined. Okay? So this right now is, if everything, position-wise, everything stays the same, then you have the sheet that shows the different options.
Okay.
So we'll net in and out.
Do we have that sheet yet? No?
Yes, you got it the first night.
What?
Don't look at me like that.
Bob.
It's your nose will get stuck.
You got it the first night.
Bob, the one up on the screen behind you, the 16, 17 column, the total is different on our sheet.
Which one?
The, the bottom total for 16, 17. Yeah, it's different on our sheet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's just.
Mike, you can edit that page. Quick it, edit it right now? Because see, what happens, we didn't think we'd get to these, so we didn't have these in.
Sometimes I don't print things out.
So edit that too. 52, 16, 458. Good catch.
Do you remember that?
What, the comparison? Having a superintendent.
Yes, it's like this.
Huh? Oh, I crossed it out.
Oh, so it's from our last packet?
It was the very first, you got it the first night.
Got it. I took, I put an X through it, so I didn't mean that.
We weren't gonna do these, we were only gonna go up through here tonight. So we hadn't filled this out, so I had to fill it in this.
We have those sheets though, right?
Yes.
We did, but we crossed about, so you might have taken them out tonight.
Okay, so we were on line 248, prior to the benefits associated with that, and group insurance. So actually, we're down to 250, line 250.
Yeah.
Line 250.
What is that?
I mean, purse?
Retirement.
Oh.
Okay, 251, staff development, flat, business. You see this says co-admit, that's the two positions. That's not one. And the benefits associated with it? And the insurance associated with it? Okay?
Well, what happened here?
Which one? What line?
We had a change.
254.
Okay.
Different person.
Different person, different type of policy.
Okay.
Because she's covered under her husband.
Okay. By the way, and, and that wasn't. Remember I said at the end of the year, we know we're gonna be returning at least $100,000 to the town? There's an example where a big, big chunk can come from right there.
Oh, yeah, one, one change, 16,000, yeah.
Okay. Line 255. Again, this is as, everything is as it is. Support salary.
255 is Article 8.
Article 8.
Sorry.
That's what I thought.
I knew exactly what you did there.
Okay, so Mike, would you go back to the colored page? So we put the bottom percent in here. So we should have minus 230, 23809. And of which, you know, that 16,000 was the bulk of it, so it's negative 10.33%. Okay? Can you get Kevin yet? Okay, do you want? 6:08, right, PM is what you want? At 7:30, you're usually asked, you want to consider stopping at 8:00 or you want to keep going or whatever. Our plan tonight was to at least get through this, this article, but we can go further if you want. I would just comment that if we go further in here, the things that are in there, obviously, we have collective bargaining that's still gonna factor in. We put steps in these two. This is just one line at the moment, and you still have to meet, I believe, stipend committee, right? It's still has to meet.
Yeah. I mean, the stipend is just.
We could, it depends on how much you want to comp tonight, but we could, we could do Article 8 and Article 5 and leave these two for the next night if you wanted to end at 8:00. Or we can go through the whole thing and you can make revisits in the next meeting, you do your revisits.
Definitely, definitely do eight and see what happens.
Eight and then possibly five, because that's really just a one-line article.
Well, it's one page.
But you didn't meet yet.
It's, it's what, it's just the stipends. There's, we had no one ask for any new stipends, so you're basically looking at the same sheet. And the only difference that we would have from one year to the next is the base pay with contract negotiations, which at this point hasn't changed.
So we can talk about it, but you did have a committee and you did meet, or no?
No.
Has to be one of you there too.
Has to be you guys there.
Huh? I mean, I know it's gonna go.
Two, yeah, it's you two and.
No, just one from the school committee, one. Believe me, I did it by myself. But what I'm saying is, when it says in the contract that we have to form this committee and have to meet, then we have to do it.
Yeah, I mean, we did it last year because I...
Well, you had it, you had it in position.
You and I went last year.
You had the stipend.
Yeah, both of you, you two, both of you two went.
So, is, is the stipend committee, is that you and two board members? Is that the committee?
No, no.
Or is it other teachers? You have two teachers, two board members, and somebody from the public.
Teacher's contract.
Somebody from the public.
If, if you're adding stipends, it changes.
If you're adding stipends.
No, 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 it says yearly, I believe annually. I'd have to look, but...
Okay, so, do we, right now, we're gonna shoot for eight, and we try to get through Article 8 and 5, or just...
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Ron, do you wanna read it? We're looking for line 255.
Okay, gotta be turning the page. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, again, this is, if all the positions are exactly, exactly as it is.
Cause once I start, you're gonna say, but I wanna see this.
255.
So, go for it.
There you go, principals and sport, I'll just, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, it is.
We put, all the narratives are much more detailed than last year, so it's supposed to be more transparent, so it's supposed to...
Much more easier to see what it is. I like the narrative part.
Or learn from last year, you kept asking the questions. Just put the questions in now.
No, it helps for, you go back ten years, you'd be able to see.
That's the reason.
Yep, exactly.
I wanna have a...
I don't know.
All right. 257?
You wanna just add the contract right here?
Oh, good, can you read it?
It said, "A stipend advisory committee will meet, will meet each year, made up of two association appointees, two school committee appointees, and one community member appointed by the school committee. This committee will review possible activity stipends for the following school year and make recommendations to the superintendent and school committee for budget consideration."
Thank you.
Welcome.
You had that in your January meeting and in your February school meeting to meet, but nothing's happened yet, so...
I don't remember the date, there was no dates. Huh? It wasn't, I know, but there wasn't any dates set or anything. Not, I mean, not that that's an excuse or a reason, but...
Okay.
You squeeze one in?
We were kinda waiting on negotiations to get started, but it took a lot longer than anticipated, so that's...
So...
Cause it's tied to it.
So, any questions? Do you wanna set a time for that now?
A quick meeting, a quick stipend meeting.
Have it happen?
Yeah, who's the other committee member?
Jeanette.
It can be any, any two. It can be any two.
I know, I was volunteering.
We had, we had Norma Pettigrew, and we had Guy LaBranche. I know Norma said that she would do it this year. We would need somebody from the, say, upper... Six, seven, uh, yeah, six, seven, eight.
Mr. Cody, would you mind doing that?
And since Mr. Cody's sitting right here, he's like...
Can we set a type?
And then we need a parent.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, last time, the parent came, never showed up, or...
No, but Amanda might know somebody.
Well, you know what?
I don't know parents.
You have a parent on your committee, and they, if they agree to be on the committee, and they know when the meeting is, and they don't come...
Pass the PTG to David, they're here every day.
Well, Amy Demers was, yeah, okay, we'll find somebody.
They're here every day.
So...
So, it'll happen before our next budget meeting. How's that sound? And who's gonna schedule it?
That would be March 1st.
When is our next meeting?
Two weeks.
March 1st.
Okay.
So, say something.
You're free the whole rest of the week, I'm looking at your calendar, so, she's free.
I just don't write everything down. Oh, I don't, we got twenty-nine days this month too, so...
I know, you got extra day.
So, do we meet right after school for the teachers, to make it easiest?
Yeah. Yeah, three o'clock, so, I, I don't really care. Pick a day, I'm, I'm good, whatever day you want.
That's good.
How about Tuesday the 1st? It's the budget day and...
Okay.
Is that okay?
Works for me.
Does that work for you, Mr. Cody?
What is it?
Tuesday the 1st.
Yeah, Tuesday, March 1st, at 3:00 PM. I'll ask Norma.
And a parent.
And we'll ask David, we got, and then we just need a parent. I'll ask Eileen to ask people at the PTG and see if we could pull somebody.
Eileen's a parent.
She's a parent.
Is that a conflict of interest?
You're a parent too. The person that said you could been...
No, no, we're gonna ask a parent, maybe a pre-K mother that I might know.
Okay, it's fine too.
Pre-K mother I might know.
Huh?
Her daughter. Line 260, I believe is where we were at.
She might decline.
No, and not if I'm babysitting.
About a pre-K grandmother you might know.
Okay, here we go.
Sport benefits are tied to the salary overseas. Principal insurance. Support group insurance, main per is again. So, now you're down to 264, which is contracted services. Covers main state retirement cost for the 125 flex plan. You guys know what that is?
Uh, no.
It's...
What, what, what number are you on?
Two-six-four.
How are we, you're way down there?
Cause the others, it's just two positions and it's all tied to the insurance or benefits.
So, the insurance.
Um, two, 264, do you know what 125 flex plan is?
No.
Okay, so you...
It's...
Basically, we have certain benefits that are pre-tax.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, medical, dental, uh, if you're in a 403B, uh, they can be pre-tax, but you have to have, and MSMA does an annual contract, so they take care of the IRS regulations and all this stuff, so we can have basically this cafeteria plan, which is the least expensive way to go.
You should've had it all along, given this here, but you never did.
Yeah.
That's, that's why it's a zero to 300.
Okay.
Okay?
Can I ask you?
Choose it like three dollars a contract, four dollars a contract, or something like that.
We also moved the software, the next one, over, because this is our alert system. This is when Amanda calls.
So, it's line 265. We moved it into the here, okay? So, when you get to the tech one, you'll see it's been moved out. Telephone?
So, this is a new category in this?
Yes, in this particular article, cause it really belongs in this one.
Okay.
Actually, that probably should say that in the narrative.
Yeah, moved from...
Moved from...
Software maintenance? Move from Article 6.
From what? Article 6?
From Article 6, yeah.
Ooh, phone went down.
I could've taken out.
Okay, 267, printing services, flat, travel conferences, decreased.
Cause it was a reason.
Based on what you do with positions, you may, you may want that back in.
Which one?
268, I'm gonna put it on there. Depending on what you do. Okay? Supplies, flat, and dues and fees, flat.
What you're saying on 267 is you want, you may wanna leave it at 1,200?
You, you may want, based on what you do, you, depending on what, what you may do, you may wanna have the money that covers what needs additional training, et cetera, or whatever. For instance, uh, the evaluation system takes some training. And that may, this, this decrease was not factoring that in. Okay?
But in system administration, we had, no, we have nothing like that.
And again, that's used for a lot of...
Travel and conference. No?
So, we do a lot of, well, I do the staff development as well when you, like...
So, go to Drummond Woodsman and go in, in October, that meeting.
Okay? So, I, you may want to change that, if, you know, it, it really depends what the person, you know, who you hire and what his experience. Okay. We are at 7:45.
Keep going.
Well, if we keep going, we're gonna, we're gonna go into Articles 2 and 3.
We were gonna go to 5, weren't we?
Five, those, you just had discussion, you're gonna have a stipend meeting first.
Yeah, but we could preview it.
Okay. We'll go, we'll go to 5.
Is that in our old one or a new one?
New one.
Starts at 164.
Okay.
And is that, remember on a slide, or on a, overall? Is that overall on Article 5, correct?
Forty-five, yeah.
Forty-five, 269.
164. Okay? You and me. Okay, 164, co-curricular stipends. This is a pretty straightforward article, uh, in terms of your extracurriculars, so here we go. Co-curricular stipends, roughly nine, nine and a third increase. Stipend benefits associated with those. The stipends you look at over there, you'll see it says stipends, co-curricular, including yearbooks, student council, Lego coach, drama coach, obviously, mine did it, et cetera.
But why did it go up? What did you ca, how did you calculate that, I guess?
It's based on a, based on the salary scale, correct?
Okay, first of all, you have cash is in there, and detention is in there, and those are flats, but we also, um, what is? Student council, all of those are based on the base rate.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we only did stipended for everything, so we don't know what the base goes up, if it goes up. You know what I'm saying? So, I, no, I'm just curious as to how... You, you think we added, cause we didn't have that before maybe, did we? We didn't have the detention stipended amount, I think?
We changed detention, and we changed, um, but we have more, you're also planning on more student days, and I, um, we have fifty...
Something about... We may have had it, but we never, um, budgeted for it or something.
Put it on, we'll come back.
Yeah.
For the line. Okay, uh, 165, stipend benefits associated, travel and conference, flat. Supplies, slight increase.
I actually did increase the base a little. This was the first one I did on that.
Shameful.
I'm sorry, I did. There was a little bit of a base increase, which is what affected us. Yeah.
Just as a placeholder?
Mm-hmm. This is what my actual sheet, this is like...
Okay.
Okay, so I'm trying to comment, even though I put it on there, that this is due to a base...
So, we did have that last year.
Increase placeholder. Okay, 168, correct? Dues and fees, flat. Pub transportation, flat. Do we need to change that now that we've got a bus contract?
Which one?
No, no, cause we're pretty darn close to what they were.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll definitely need the same amount of transportation, at least.
But I, I, we're at an increased rate, that's all than what we had before. So, is, does that mean you'd be like 1,600?
Their, their increased individual rates were pretty much what we have for individual rates in this current.
Okay, so flats, fine. Okay. Line 170, extracurricular stipends, which we have, I'm gonna put it on there, cause you're gonna come back to that, correct? After your stipend meet. Contract, coaches' contract services, that's like your bus, your referees and so forth.
Uh, coaches' contracted services, those are for referees?
Yeah, it says referees.
Oh.
173, repairs, uh, slight increase, uh, travel conferences, flat. Coaching supplies, flat. Coaching dues, flat. And transportation is flat, and is that gonna be enough now, based on that we got a contract?
Yeah.
So, you never zero it?
Cause we didn't get close to as much for away games, or for this year. The other thing, um, I mean, I did go over this with the athletic director for the athletic section part of it already, for all the supplies and transportation, and for mainly Adrian, she's new, but when it come to the, the other curriculum-type items, you know, looking at different topics and logos and stuff like that, so we knew we had enough stuff.
They don't expect any, um, increase on line, on 175, supplies for soccer or basketball or anything like that? I don't know.
No, I mean, according to Tracy...
Cause we don't know, yeah.
Well, no, no, according to Tracy, when, when she went over that portion, she had figured that she had enough in her supplies and some shoes.
This is like to keep maintaining, get rid of the old stuff.
Right.
Bring the new. But maintaining.
Okay, it's 7:15, 51. What would you like to do?
Anything quick, go home, Mike. Anything quick.
Quit while we're ahead, huh? What are the two left?
Mike, would you go back to the purple sheet for a minute? I mean, the blue sheet?
We have two.
Eight?
No, we have six, six and two.
What?
We have the support staff...
These two.
Article, and we have regular and secondary instruction.
Okay. These two. And Mike, would you go back one slide? Or maybe it's two? Nope, this one. So, we're on the 23rd. School, uh, if we, if we stay at this, we finalize it for March 1st, which would be our next meeting, which means we'd have to go through those two articles and have final discussions and whatever, if you wanna stay...
No, that's why we should, I think we should continue, and so we can really hash it out on the first, cause we have to have a vote on the first, correct?
If you wanna live exactly by that, or schedule another meeting between now and then, or in, after then, or between here and here, I don't know. I mean, really, you have this one too, for finalized.
We could have a meeting before.
I think you could get through both of those articles on this day, personally. You have your discussion, and, and then here you do your finalized.
Yeah, but we have to go back on the things we might have questions on.
How many, I can tell you right now, you have a whole lot less hours than you did I tell you right now, you have a whole lot less hours than you did last year.
Yeah. Because this is so organized and nice.
Last year, you didn't have the narrative.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Right, we don't have to keep asking, what is that for?
That's correct.
There's just so many unknowns, too.
It's really only, there's the collective bargaining and the health.
That's huge. Medical insurance is huge.
Well, the medical, we've got a pretty good placeholder. So I don't think, I think it's really the collective bargaining.
Did you say that was forty-five thousand? If it, forty-three thousand five hundred if it increases eight percent across the board? Right?
Yep.
I didn't write that wrong?
The teachers.
Probably on a contract.
Oh, it's the teachers only.
Yes.
And there's two contracts. And there's just as many people on the other side, yeah, that's okay. So do you want to adjourn, Chairperson?
No, no.
It's forty-three.
Only for teachers' contract.
Twenty for teachers. Twenty thousand for the teachers, that's where he was thinking.
Twenty thousand for teachers, what?
What was?
Oh, health insurance.
And you currently now have... Mike, would you go forward one more? Please, thank you. You have these articles with you. The only thing, these won't be put on the web, but all the others will be. Okay? You have those, so I mean, if you wanted to review those and have your questions.
Well, Article two, isn't that just high school? No.
Well, that's your, this is your most expensive, this is your big one.
Oh, that's your biggest one. It's in there, though, it's in there.
Sixty percent of your budget.
Okay, so we've gotta go back to...
Yes. I think we should just go over, just to...
We've gotta, we've gotta go back to...
What article?
Well, right now, the way this budget is put together, isn't put together with the restructuring of the administrative staff. So that makes, that will make a significant difference.
But you have this sheet, which has those options already in it. So you can net, right off the head, you can weigh it out. You want to just go over this sheet? We don't have it to show up nor there.
Yeah, I think we should go over that.
Kim, do you have that?
That's gonna be a wash.
On that computer, you don't? This one? We don't. I don't think I...
They haven't had it yet. They haven't had it out there.
Because we can do it, we can project it to this audience.
I have it in my book someplace.
I do.
Release it then.
Okay. You want me to pop out of here?
This is the one he was talking about.
Ladies, he's gonna project it up here.
You know what, it's probably in there somewhere.
Oh, and I have a question. Oh, it's the one we didn't talk about yet. We didn't do that one yet.
We should do that.
We didn't do that one yet. And get the questions out. Why don't we do that? Yes, do we want to continue? It's eight o'clock.
This is Article...
I'd like to continue till at least eight-thirty, if we want to take a vote.
One second, pour myself a fresh cup of coffee and have another cookie and I can...
Just because there's questions on the other articles that we didn't discuss, but if we get some answers, then that's less...
Well, if you can pre-tell us, we have to research, that'd be great. Okay, I was gonna say that's not the same. Can you guys see that already?
It was up to number seven, right?
Okay, so...
Do you want me to hide some of these? I didn't think you wanted to.
Yeah, well, look, just grab, just grab your lines and shrink them.
Just go to the top, just go to the top.
No, just grab the line.
We haven't done Article two yet, we just want to look at Article eight, I think, right? Article eight and Article...
That's good. Okay, then there is it. Okay. The first one is Article, this is Article seventy, which you just went over, which makes sense to do this one right now.
Yeah.
And the proposal is to combine the superintendent principal position and that's the numbers, that's the net effect, twenty thousand nine twenty-nine by doing it. That's if you take the salary in column G, I don't know what the person just met with you said, I think that's probably on the low end of what you're gonna find in the marketplace.
You take the what?
If you take this as the number for the combined position.
Oh, for a salary number.
For salary. And you did some research also, but I think you'll find that's on the low end of what you're gonna find in the area. So there's your net, your net savings are twenty, twenty-one thousand.
Just in salary?
No, it's, that's the, that right there is the salary and benefit combined number. If you go into the budget, look at the current one for each of them.
Yep.
Net it out against that, those add up subtracted up equals that. So the question is, is one oh five the number you want to use? That's really the question you get to decide.
One oh five is equivalent to a hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred with salary and benefits. And now, and what you're seeing is you're taking the two positions and you're splitting it between Articles seven and Article eight. So ninety-five would go into Article eight and fifty-three would go into Article seven.
Right, but we would have one person, so it would be only one benefits.
Correct.
Instead of two benefits.
That's...
So it would be the full benefit that you need to look at, correct?
If I took a hundred and five thousand, I would take all the benefits associated with that salary.
Okay.
Okay, one insurance.
One insurance.
So that, when you do that, total salary plus benefits plus insurances, it's one forty-nine, five-one-eight.
One forty-nine what?
Five-one-eight.
Five-one-eight. Is what it would cost to have a combo person.
I don't think so.
No, I just don't think it does make sense.
No. It should be only twenty thousand added for benefits, you know, approximately, right? For family coverage?
Right, but you still have to cover main purs, Medicare. You have to cover workers' comp.
How much is that usually per person? Just one person? You know what I mean?
It's right here.
Well...
It says right here.
For some reason, I think that's doubled the insurance.
No, I didn't double the insurance.
If you go to...
You went to...
Oh, that's the whole administration.
It's two, line two fifty-five, two fifty-nine and two sixty-one.
Right.
And then you got main purs, which is two, three sixty-three.
Two sixty-three.
Which is a negative...
Where's the six?
Six dollars.
What is this?
And then if you go to Article seven...
What's the sixty-fourty? Where'd you come up with a sixty-fourty on that?
I was told that...
Article eight and Article seven.
Right, so you have one person, they're covering two positions. Ones, so you got one person who's sixty percent being superintendent and forty percent being a principal. And so...
I guess I kind of look at it the other way around.
Or the other way around, I don't know.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, the end result is, you gotta figure out your dollar mark.
The end result is, we need to know what we can offer for a salary for one person and one set of benefits. That's, that's what we're looking at, correct?
If you take the one hundred and eight thousand plus the sixty-one thousand plus, you know, it's a hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and forty-seven. If we give somebody a hundred and five thousand for the salary, that leaves us sixty-five thousand four hundred and forty-seven for benefits. Do you see what I'm saying?
Right now, your principal is a hundred and eight, seven-eleven, salary and benefits.
Right.
Your superintendent is sixty-one thousand salary and benefits.
So that's a hundred and seventy four four seven.
Right. If you have a person hired at a hundred and five thousand...
Subtract that, you get sixty-five thousand four hundred and forty-seven.
And how are you...
So now you're saying the benefits, medical benefits, is like twenty thousand.
Yeah, family coverage, you got it.
Right. So now that's forty-something thousand.
You still have to cover main purs.
But that's not forty-five thousand dollars worth, is it?
No, but you, but you still, you have to figure them all out. You've got, um, so if you go back in and look at...
Well...
For some reason, I think there's twenty thousand too much, so it's actually a savings of forty thousand.
I think if we...
But I don't know, I ca...
I think if we, uh...
I'd have to look at the administration.
If we, if we go with, if we take the one seventy, one seventy four forty-seven, that's what, that's what we've got right now, right? For the combined position?
Yes, yes.
And that's salary and benefits?
Yes.
Okay. So if we take the one oh five away from that, that leaves you with seven five thousand. That might leave us with, um...
No, now you're at sixty-five thousand four hundred and forty-seven. And then what, what are you saying?
Oh, sixty-five, yes, right. Yeah, so that's a difference of forty-five thousand.
When the, all the other insurances or main purs and all the payroll benefits can't equal more than ten thousand...
Aren't those figured into those, Benny's?
Wow, that's all ten thousand.
I'm saying it can't.
Are main purs figured into these figures that you gave us on benefits and stuff?
Yes.
So they're already figured in there, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be double.
I'm just saying, it doesn't make sense. I'm no math whiz.
No, but it's only one person for this. One person.
Yeah, as far as...
But even if that, then you're at thirty-five thousand, but whatever. I'm just saying. Something's not right.
Well, the way I look at it is, okay, you can, you can look at the, look at the total of the two. The total of the two positions would be the total of the two top numbers, correct?
Yes.
One seventy, right?
Yes.
Okay. The sixty percent and the forty percent...
That doesn't matter.
I, I think we can...
You don't have to look at that.
We can throw that out because nobody coming in is gonna know whether they're doing fifty percent or forty percent.
Yeah, but they're not trying to say, keep a placeholder in Article eight and Article seven with some amounts.
Well, with medums, if you are going to have somebody do two different positions and they are in two separate articles, you have to differentiate and have to sit there and you've got to say, so much is for this position, so much is... So you just need to determine, you know, is it fifty-fifty or sixty-four?
Sure.
I went with sixty-fourty.
Yes, that's fine.
So that's where, that's where the sixty-fourty comes in.
Right, especially because you, right now, you only have a superintendent that's fifty percent.
Right, but the ninety-five and the fifty-three... Those don't add up to one seventy, correct?
No. And it shouldn't. That adds up to one forty-nine, five-one-eight. But, you know, forget about separating it out into the articles right now. What you need to know is the bottom line. Then you can separate it.
So...
Five percent. So say we give them full family coverage.
Okay, just what, just what I did is, I took, I took the salary, the benefits and the, the, when I say the benefits, I'm talking personal benefits, which is Medicaid and all those, Medicare, Suda, workers' comp and so forth. Added the salary of the principal, salary, that and the health benefits. Did the same thing with the principal. Salary, blah blah blah, I mean superintendent. That comes to one sixty-three, six-six-one. Is that what you got?
That's what I did too, yeah.
So, so basically, there's your number. That, there's the, the big numbers. Subtract out of that whatever you want to pay a new person for salary and benefits. So if you said worst case, it's a family plan, it's twenty, twenty, say twenty-one thousand dollars. Subtract twenty-one thousand from that.
Would you get one sixty-six?
Forty thousand.
You're down to...
One sixty-three?
One forty-two, six-six-one. Now you decide, one forty-two, six-six-one, where you want to pay somebody for salary.
And now...
Minus your, your, uh, fight care. Paying benefits include Medicare, Suda and workers' comp and so forth. So...
So...
She asked me a number and I said, put one oh five for a salary. Split it sixty, forty. Because you had to have it in two systems and that was... Really doesn't matter, you can split it fifty-fifty if you want.
But you're gonna have more room to play with if you need to increase the salary.
Yeah, I knew that going in. But I, but I, what I did...
But it's gonna be more than...
We researched around and looked around, okay, what would be the bottom this would probably get somebody for? One oh five is the number I think you can bottom and get them for. The going rate right now is...
We don't want to budget the bottom number.
Well over one oh five.
So what's the real savings now under this? What, the twenty-nine, twenty-nine is actually what, forty thousand something?
No, it's probably gonna...
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty, thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand.
That's if we were to hire somebody for one oh five.
Right.
Right.
But, um...
That's, that's one oh five with a full family.
No, that's, 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 that shouldn't say, that shouldn't say that right there.
But the thirty-five thousand dollar savings is a one oh five plus the full...
Oh, you're counting full family.
Yeah, for one oh five, plus, plus full family yields like a thirty-five thousand plus or minus savings.
And again, that number, that one oh five came from looking around, say, okay, what's about? It's one building, man.
Well, so thirty-nine thousand, four twenty-three.
Going rate for superintendent right now is, is at least twenty-five thousand dollars a day.
Thank you.
For five days.
Twenty-five thousand, twenty-five.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it figures out to be.
Twenty-five thousand a day?
At least.
Yeah, but not for...
Like right now, MDI just opened theirs, MDI, and it's very similar in terms of local residents, a lot of outside money, I mean, summer residents and so forth. Their starting salary is starting well above that twenty-five. And that's way up the coast. Down here, you're close to Massachusetts. Massachusetts, they've got a thing in the mail today, Bolton's starting salary is one seventy-five.
Okay, but we're talking about the...
Watch school, that's why I chose one oh five.
Two hundred kids.
That's why I chose one oh five. Hopefully you can get someone for that. But you do have some wiggle room and still have savings. Twenty-five, thirty thousand, something, whatever, whatever you choose. But I had to put it, come up with a place over summer.
Yeah, Judy, did you look that up?
What's that?
The salaries?
She said she did look the day.
Did you look around at what they're getting? And you thought one oh five was low? Or the lowest?
One, I think would probably, most likely have to go a little more than one oh five. However, it depends on, like everything else, on like who we get, their experiences.
Right, but we need a placeholder. So do you want to put one-ten?
When she and I were saying, no, she says, when she put her number, I said one oh five, but I, my guess was one oh eight would be the number you could probably... Know why? That was the number I picked up, based on looking around. I think that would be enough for somebody if they want their first superintendency. If you go with somebody with their first superintendency with multiple years of principal experience. Obviously, we'd want somebody that's new both.
And I, the other thing too is, when I, when I went on MSMA salary under a part-time superintendent, I did the average of what was out there and the average was thirty-five thousand nineteen for a part-time superintendent. And then I did the same thing for an elementary principal and the part, and the average was seventy-five, eighty-seven. So when I did it, I combined the two together. So that's how I came up with my hundred and five. Not that that's...
Okay, from the average, from the, from the chart.
Averages from the salary, so that about there.
All right, so I'd like a placeholder of one-ten.
So just change that sheet to one-ten.
No, but now, and we'll just do fifty-fifty?
And it should say plus family coverage. Not with...
Judy?
What?
Do you want discussion on that and do you want to just put it as fifty-fifty for now?
You know, that doesn't, that's...
It's immaterial.
Really doesn't matter, Kim can decide. All right, I, I would see it more as, I would see it more as doing more principal stuff than doing...
No, then we'll switch it. But what I'm saying is, we need to have partial in Article seven and partial in Article eight.
I think it's kinda hard to decide what they're gonna do because the two jobs, you know, and looking at the two job descriptions...
She's just talking in terms of articles.
Yeah, and looking at the two job descriptions, it, they, they overlap a lot of things. I mean, all the things that we were, that were just a very small... Addendum piece from the principal's job to fit into the superintendent's job and doing that job description. So I don't think it, I don't, you know, I don't think it really matters how she wants to do it. I think if she's already got it set up in a certain way, sixty, forty is fine. It's just gonna be the same pay, it's gonna be the same person.
No, she didn't put it in yet, right? What we have has the positions now.
Just on this paper.
So she has to do it, so I'm saying Article eight...
Do sixty, principal and forty, super.
Okay, so you want for Articles seven and eight to be adjusted to reflect...
A total of one-ten.
Plus, plus family.
Plus family plan.
Okay, so it should be those numbers.
Adjust, reflect.
So if you, if you wanted to...
So that's what we have right now.
Fifty, fifty.
Article eight is the principal. So you have sixty, forty, oh, yeah.
You could go fifty-fifty, just to make the, to make it easy to comprehend.
No, I'm saying, if you see the sixty, it says superprincipal. Just take the super out for the Article eight and then take the principal out for Article seven. Oh, you're not working on it?
I've already done the numbers. You aren't, I just...
You mean just the labels, Mary?
She'll have this updated for you next time.
It's just a...
How do you want it?
It's just bookkeeping, correct, Kim?
Yeah.
All right.
It doesn't, so you can do it however it works best for you.
All right.
If it works best fifty-fifty, do it fifty-fifty. It's, it's nothing more than bookkeeping. It's nothing more than bookkeeping, right?
That's right.
To get it in the right thing for the state.
So fifty-fifty might be good for this year, and then we can adjust it next year, if we felt we should.
Next year, it won't...the adjusting won't...
It won't matter.
The adjusting won't matter, because it's only semantics.
To see it easier. For people to see it easier. You know, if they see the principal line in Articles, what?
Seven, eight.
Article Eight, then they know to double it, because they'll see it over there. I don't know, it's just easier, man.
Why not make a...
Explain where it is in the budget.
I was gonna say, just...right, why?
If you go fifty-fifty, it is very, like you said, very...look at the others. We have two town people. They're not in yes.
Fifty-fifty might be the easiest way to go.
It makes sense to me.
So fifty-fifty.
All right, so the next time we meet, we'll see that change in these papers, Article Seven and Article Eight.
Okay, and you might as well go down to this one then, right now, because we haven't done Article Two, and have the discussion on that, or you wanna wait?
We got ten minutes, Article Two.
Well, I'm in.
We didn't vote on it, but we'll go to Article Two. Oh, you mean number two on this article?
Number two, which is number two article, which is, you know, we're gonna have to have two teachers in K next year.
Right.
And it's looking like, even though the numbers, we don't know the total numbers in pre-K, it looks like you're still gonna need two pre-K.
All right, so that's...
Increased special needs.
That was one of my questions, is what do we have in this Article Two right now? What do we have in this budget that I'm looking at?
You have what we currently have.
What we currently have in the...
So we don't have the new teacher.
That's correct.
That is correct.
All right, so when I go to line sixty-five, Article Two...
You have two pre-Ks.
What do I have there for K one and two?
K, you need pre-K and K. What'd you have?
No, I'm just looking at sixty-five. Right now, it says, four classroom teachers. What is there? Just so I know.
Four classroom teachers?
That's what it says. Line sixty-five...
Yeah, we've got two...
It says, four teachers in this line.
We've got two pre-Ks.
No, 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 this is not pre-K. That's a separate line.
One kindergarten, right.
Oh, two firsts.
Two firsts and one second.
Two firsts and one second.
Two firsts.
Okay, that's there.
One second.
Then I go...
So what we're looking at, if we didn't need two pre-Ks next year, we wouldn't need a new teacher, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so line eighty-six is the two pre-K teachers.
Fourteen kids? Well, we're just talking K and pre-K, I think, at the moment. Pre-K, now we know from childhood, so we have fourteen kids, is it correct? Excuse me, we know there's fourteen kids, of which twelve are identified as some type of services.
So we already have twelve out of a possible sixteen, right? That's the limit, sixteen.
And you have a higher percentage of kids with needs.
Right, but that, we could also put in two ed techs, couldn't we?
Yeah, you could.
But you can't do it if you have more than sixteen.
You can't have...
Oh, I understand, but we have sixteen.
So we're two away from sixteen.
We're two away from sixteen right now.
No, but there was no preschool, so people didn't know. The word has been out for a year. People know it's out there, they're probably knocking on the door now, because they don't have to pay for preschool, and that's a true fact. I mean, I would. And so we probably got a good head count, I would say, now.
No, I think you're underestimating. At this time, not last year, there's no way I could've told you there's gonna be twenty-nine.
Right, but they had no idea there was a preschool, because there wasn't one. You know what I mean?
But they know now.
Now the word is out.
But they know now.
We've been trying...two months ago, I said, they've been keeping a list of kids. Every time a kid comes in, picks up something, okay, what grade is that kid? Three.
Right, right.
Keeping a number. And fourteen is very, very conservative.
I would not be surprised if you hit twenty.
Well, then what...
And maybe more than that, but I think fourteen in February...we did this every year for kindergarten for the last twenty years too.
Right.
You have fourteen in February, you have way more than that come July.
Way.
It is never ever...
And then you start...it's the same thing with kindergarten. How many times have we started with one teacher in kindergarten, and then we've gone over the twenty mark, so we've had to make adjustments?
All right, so what I would like to do in line...if I can find it...the one I was just on, here, line sixty-five, then I think we should budget for five classroom teachers.
Before you go there...
What?
You have to...now, this is a discussion, you can even have administration decide or you decide. Right now, if you go to enrollment numbers, that sheet with enrollment numbers...
I don't know if I ever go to...I know we've got new ones, but not during a budget time, so I got the old one. Is that this one?
If you look at it, it says kindergarten, next year, thirty kids. Twenty-nine, thirty, right there. So you need two. First grade, you have twelve. In second grade, you'll have twenty-two. Now, granted, that might go up a couple, might go down a couple. Okay? You ask, you might want to write around that. How many staff you have? We have two teachers for your pre-K population currently. You have one kindergarten teacher, you have one two first...one first grade, two...
Two first grades.
Two first grades and one second. What's your recommendation next year, Tricia?
My recommendation is to combine the two first grades into one second.
Combine the two first grades into what?
Ten and eleven. Into one second.
Right now, right now, if you get more than twenty-one kids in a class, and we were off at the beginning of the school year.
Ten and eleven.
You started the school year with more than one room, and then one room.
So you have one second grade teacher, one first grade teacher, and two kindergarten teachers, still a total of four.
So you still have enough teachers?
That'd be twenty-seven.
Two sitting in pre-K, so...
If you combine...
That's correct. If you don't want to do that, then yes, you would have to add a position somewhere.
Is there any reason the kids going from first grade to second grade would need to still be split into two?
You'll have to talk to the principal and your staff.
Like, needs-wise?
Needs-wise, not at the moment where they are. Again, they're right on the edge. We're talking about those lower grades, you know, eleven kids, twelve kids, that's three.
It can be a lot, yeah.
But if you get up to twenty-four, twenty-five, so it's really...that's the hardest part. We're playing this number game, it's February. It could be very different in June, it could be again different in August, but twenty and twenty-one is not unreasonable in second grade. Twenty-four, twenty-six, that's not reasonable. So you're...
And as you go further up the grade level cohort-wise, the student-to-teacher ratio obviously shifts.
I know, but what does it mean, two T, two ed techs? What is that?
It means you have two teachers and two ed techs.
Oh, that's just for pre-K. But we have no ed techs?
No, I didn't put ed techs anyplace else. The reason I put ed techs is, if you have six...you have to have an eight-to-one ratio of pre-K, adult to student. That's two...
Right, so...
So that's a...
But I'm saying, if we got to twenty-four kids in some...in one class, we could add an ed tech, that's all I'm saying.
Certainly could.
So, but we don't have an ed tech down pre-K, not pre-K. From K to two, we have no ed techs.
That's not true.
That's not true.
We assign them as needed, as opposed to have to because of the numbers alone.
Oh, but I thought there was one at the upper end we just heard about.
That's correct.
And there's no one down here.
There was no, there's no regular ed, floating ed tech in the lower grades any longer.
There is no floating ed...
There is no floating, regular ed tech.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. I'm not talking special ed. We don't have a regular ed, ed tech for K through two. No one's helping them, we don't have them.
Okay. You're saying two different things. Somebody is always available for help if they're needed, but there is nobody that's floating like it used to be. No.
So in other words...
On the upper one, it goes five, six, seven, eight.
Right.
Right?
I think we need an ed tech down in the slower...regular ed tech.
So somebody's working in Title One.
Yeah.
I feel we need a regular ed tech...
Is there another ed tech down here?
K to two.
Can K...
Well, a proposal would be to have one regular ed tech in each of the cohorts, to be used however the cohort teaches.
At this point, I know she's being doing Title One, but is there anybody else down there besides...
But that's not budgeting.
Sherry right now as an ed tech in K through...
That's on your sheet, because of possibility.
Okay, then we're having two different conversations. Right now, the regular ed, ed tech, if you can call them, you've got the computer lab.
Yeah, we're not talking about that.
But while it's important to recognize, though, computer lab, Gail is somebody who helps students. So if she doesn't have a class time assigned, she is supporting students in a different capacity.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Kindergarten, right now, has two ed techs because of the special needs population. So then you've got, Sherry Smith is assigned to the Title One. Then you've got Jen Goodwin, who is an ed tech, assigned to the library. But what you're referring to, as far as a floating, regular ed tech, does not exist below fifth grade.
But I'm not even saying that it would be a floater. It would be...that sounds like a dead body, doesn't it?
Stationary ed tech.
Right, that if a class got to twenty-six kids, say, then I want that kid put in second grade, you know what I mean? I mean, the ed tech put in the second grade to help, if that's unmanageable.
I don't have anybody else stand by.
So I think right now, what you're saying, Mary, is this, we're looking at the possibility of hiring a new teacher...
Or...
Or a new ed tech. Because if we are waiting to see if we need a new teacher and then hiring a...
It's because of the unknown numbers, yes.
I think Tricia's point of combining the two...
Current first...
The current first grades into one grade next year, and see if it doesn't get any bigger than that or whatever, that would take care of the extra teaching that we will probably need for pre-K, correct?
Yep.
And then, if we find out that any one of these classes grows to a place beyond where it makes sense, then we could look to hire, we could advertise for an ed tech instead of a whole new teacher.
I know, but that's mid-year, that's not budgeting for that person.
Okay, you have a policy that says, in the K-two area, your policy is eighteen to nine...twenty-point-five or so forth. You're already over that, so you're against your policy.
What are you talking about?
You just established a policy on student-teacher ratios for each of the cohort levels.
Yes.
Twenty was the number for K-one, two.
Right, that's why I'm trying to get at. I want help, I want those teachers down in the young wing to have help. That's what I'm getting at.
Well, the request was brought in to have one ed tech for each of the cohorts. And then the cohort basically decides where those kids, where they can best, as a group, collectively decide where that person is best needed throughout the day, every day.
In the lower grades.
But if the policy is that you don't exceed twenty in a classroom...
You're already over.
Then you need to plan for another teacher. That's your safest. It's easier to cut that money out. I mean, it's February. This is the hard part, we know this every year. But it's easier to cut that money out if the numbers drop than it is in July to put that teacher money in, you know? But you also gotta look K to eight at your numbers and where people are ratio-wise.
Isn't that also, though, where in the past, we've combined, like, first grade and second grade students?
Multi-age.
And had a multi-age room to help cut the numbers and...
Yep.
And Patty's got experience with it.
No, this is good. Wasn't that one of our norms, is to talk about, put it on the table? Let's read it again in case...
Yeah.
Here we go, willing to put ideas on the table.
One of the reasons to go to cohort structure is when you start identifying kids based on what they develop and need, not necessarily what their birth date was.
Right.
You could start to do that, and that's why you want to move in this direction long term. I mean, particularly, they got your six, seven, eight, and you have four teachers for sixty-four kids.
Right, so that cohort seems fine. And then you have three, four, five, which is...
And the following, maybe you're gonna have seventy-two.
Fourth grade.
You have fifty-six next year, and then following year, seventy-two.
So where's the other line?
But you have certification issues everywhere.
So if you look at it from just the cohort point of view, that's the column in yellow, right?
Yes.
We are meeting that twenty kids to a teacher.
Thank you.
If the num...
If it's averaged.
If they're averaged, right, so that would be mixing classrooms.
Right.
That's why it was...
But, yeah.
Yeah, so multi-age, like you say.
Right.
But it's a cohort. We're trying, we gotta rethink things. We gotta think in that big group.
I mean, that's a developmental shift for a lot of your stuff. I mean, you haven't worked that way in a long time.
The point is...
It's my understanding, you used to have a multi-age at some point, some...
We've had them at different grade levels, but...
So it's not a total...
We've had them in the upper grades, like fifth and sixth, and fourth and fifth, and we've had them in the lower grades, one and two, and two and three, correct, Patty?
Yes.
So...
So here's the suggestion.
And the other thing is, I mean, what we're trying to do here, big picture, is to move in a proficiency-based learning pattern, which will allow us to be able to move kids from one roof to another.
Yeah.
No matter whether they're in the first grade, or the second grade, or the third grade. You might have somebody in the fourth grade that's ready to go into the sixth grade at some point. I mean, the whole idea of proficiency-based learning and getting all this, and the cohorts and all this stuff that we're working to get really moving forward, is to be able to not have to worry about how many you've got in every room at every minute, I mean, every grade at every minute. More about how many you've got in the room, not in the grade, correct?
So here's a suggestion. It was requested from the cohorts, or a couple of the cohorts, that they have an ed tech assigned to them, that they can use how they need fit. If you take the savings that you have on the superintendent-principal combination, and you take, if you were to add two ed techs, it would be less than adding a full teacher, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.